Under disclosure of pecuniary interest, we have none before me at this time. If at some point throughout the meeting a member of council feels they have a pecuniary interest, please let us know at that time. Item number three on the agenda, deputation petitions in public meetings. We have Mr. Jay Anstey of Collins Barrow here with us this evening to present to committee a review of the 2017 audit. Jay, please join us and then Adam Treasurer, welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Vote is yours.
Thank you all for members of council for having us here today to present the audited 2017 financial statements. This year, we are one council meeting later than the previous two years, but this is still my first council presentation of the year and as a result will likely be the first municipal, 2017 municipal financial statements that our office does issue this year. Given that this is the first year of a new treasurer in place, I think that speaks volumes to both the systems that are in place and the personnel in the Treasury Department that have kept things running smoothly throughout the 2017 year to have another smooth audit here. Our objective here today is to ensure that council does have enough understanding to recommend approving the draft financial statements as they are prepared by the town and ultimately the responsibility of the town. The financial statements are in draft form, as you will see today, and that they will remain that way until approved by a council, which is why they are dated May 29th, assuming that this committee does recommend these statements for approval. We have rendered a clean, unqualified audit opinion, which is consistent with prior years. And an independent audit does not mean that we have looked at every single transaction and every dollar received and every dollar spent in our municipality. What it does mean is that we've assessed and tested internal controls, we've evaluated accounting policies and management estimates. We've scrutinized supporting documents for all material assets, liabilities, and a sample of remaining transactions. And we've investigated all significant variances between budgeted and actual revenue and expenditures. With this in mind, here is the information we feel is important in your understanding of the financial statements. In terms of operating results from the 2017 fiscal year, the first three lines displayed here are the total operating revenue and expenditures along with the net revenues or net expenses from operations. Operating revenues have increased by over 2016 by about $1.2 million. Eight hundred thousand of this is an increase in taxation revenue, 135,000 increase in government grants, and $170,000 increase in investment income. Compared to budget, actual revenue, actual operating revenue is higher mainly in the user charges category, as it is difficult to annually anticipate the amount of water and sewer consumed, so it is budgeted fairly conservatively, so actual results are higher because consumption was higher. Operating expenditures of $35.9 million are $2 million higher in 2017 than they were in 2016. The main increases are in salaries and contracted services for police and fire, as well as some significant repair work done at the aqua facilities. It is important to note that included in the $35.9 million of operating actual expenditures is $7 million of amortization expense. This is the accounting entry used to depreciate tangible capital assets. The budget figure of 30 million does not include the $7 million expenditure. So in reality, the town's cash expenditures were only $28.9 million or $1.1 million under budget. Budgeted spending of about $600,000 on the downtown master plan on items that did not occur and $300,000 in the Parks Department for Emerald Ash funding that did not occur are the main underspent areas, along with various other savings in departments ranging from $50,000 to $200,000 per department. Overall, net expenses for the year were $444,000. Again, excluding amortization expense, this would be net revenues of $6.5 million, $5 million of which we will see was transferred to reserves and $1.4 million was spent on the repayment of long-term debt. Capital and other revenues are presented separately, as these were all funds received specifically for tangible capital assets and for the investment, from the investment in Geo Sands. Capital revenues include Robinson Road local improvement charges of $1 million, Canada Wastewater Fund grant of $554,000, OCIF grant of $130,000, use of development charges mainly on River Road West for approximately $480,000, and the assumption of the Wasaga Village subdivision valued at $1.7 million. Also included as other revenue is $920,000 of revenue from Geo Sands, which I will break down further on. I'll now move on to the financial position at the end of 2017. And as an overall comment, I'd say the town is in a very strong financial position. It's considered low risk in many of the provincial standards and is ahead of provincial averages in almost all areas. In front of us, we have the cash and investments excerpt from the financial statement. When viewed as a whole, cash and investments of $55.5 million are up $8.7 million year over year. These are broken down in front of us into three main categories: cash and cash equivalents for operating purposes, short-term investments to earn some return on investment for not immediate cash needs, but the GICs and term deposits are scheduled to mature as cash is needed, and then finally portfolio investments. And portfolio investments include both bonds and investment in the ONE fund, which is a municipal-specific government vehicle for a better return on investments than some GICs, but still within certain accessible risk levels of the municipality. We have issued a separate report. All of the investments carried by the town and all were in accordance with the municipal policy. In terms of how healthy this cash balance is, we look at the amount of cash and the ability to finance operating expenditures. Provincial ministries consider a safe amount of cash to be 10% of the annual operating expenditures. Meanwhile, Wasaga Beach could cover 64% of its expenditures, well above the safe amount of the provincial average and any of the municipalities that we audit. The taxes receivable balance represents outstanding property taxes uncollected from ratepayers. A common municipal indicator to determine how well the town is collecting property taxes is this as a percentage of total taxes levied. Note receivable from an actual investment in the government business enterprise, that is the town's 100% ownership of Geo Sands Inc., which in turn owns Wasaga Distributing Inc., Wasaga Resource Services Inc., and Wasaga Gem Co. Inc. The note receivable principal balance remains unchanged year over year and earned the town $135,000 of cash interest in 2017, which is the same as 2016. Geo Sands also again paid the town a $400,000 cash dividend in 2017, and the increase in investment in government business enterprise of about $383,000 reflects the remaining net income of Geo Sands that was not paid out as a dividend, but instead reinvested into the company's to finance its own capital and operations. Last few slides I will mention were all financial assets of the town. I'm going to turn to the liability side of the balance sheet, but I will go get back to the financial assets as a whole. On the liability side of the statement of financial position, the two significant balances are deferred revenue, which include obligatory reserve funds and other deferred revenue, which is in form of government grants, as well as long-term liabilities, which are comprised of five outstanding loans. Obligatory reserve funds are distinct in that they have a specific written legislation that monies must be spent on certain items. This is opposed to discretionary reserve funds that form part of accumulated surplus that can be transferred between funds by consumption. The bulk of obligatory reserve funds are $13 million of development charges. Development charges must be spent on infrastructure related to growth, for which studies are performed to outline future capital projects. $4.6 million of development charges were collected in 2017, and $546,000 of development charges were used mainly towards the widening of River Road West. Long-term liabilities of $15.4 million decreased by $1.4 million from regular principal repayments. There were no new long-term loans taken during the year. The province sets a repayment limit for the town's payment towards debt, principal and interest combined. The limit for 2017 was $6.6 million compared to actual payments of $1.8 million. That is, the town is three and a half times below their limit set by the province. The provincial indicator commonly used to compare how much revenue raised will go towards debt within the town's stake is 4.5%, which is a very low risk range, well below the provincial Turning back to financial assets and total financial assets and total liabilities, a good indicator of the town's financial position is net asset or net debt. Financial assets are those that can be used to pay outstanding obligations or can be converted to cash to pay outstanding obligations. Overall, the town's financial assets are $40 million above their liabilities. We see many municipalities in the net debt position, and the provincial indicators actually consider a municipality with a net debt to be in the low-risk range as long as their net debt was less than half of the revenue from user charges and taxes. The town being in a positive position puts them ahead of many others, but the amount there above puts them in exceptionally safe position as of end of 2017. As opposed to financial assets, non-financial assets aren't available to pay liabilities, but are instead used in the performance of services. Tangible capital assets make up essentially the whole balance of non-financial assets and consist of items such as land, building, equipment, vehicles, roads, and water and sewer infrastructure. The town added $6 million of capital assets during the year. $1.7 million was the Wasaga Village subdivision contributed by their developer. Other additions were the River Road West widening that is ongoing, Shore Lane reconstruction, 43rd Street North drainage work, and 21 Main Street land acquisition. Additions of $6 million were offset by $7 million of amortization expense previously mentioned for a net decrease in tangible capital assets of $1 million. This is one area that the town is in the moderate risk range according to the province. Assets are depreciating faster than they are being replaced. This is a common trend that we're seeing throughout the municipality, which is beginning to be addressed with the additions of capital taxation levies, building of reserves for capital replacement, but it is important for council to keep this in mind, particularly in the budget and process and year-end reserve transfers. One item to note is the town's reserve for acquisition of tangible capital assets did increase by $3 million this year, so while the spending wasn't on pace with what we would expect, there was some actual financing there that just wasn't spent. The accumulated surplus is displayed several places throughout the financial statement and is a commonly misinterpreted number, so it's important to understand what actually makes up the town's accumulated surplus. It's a $275 million balance, that is by no means cash or investments, it's made up of three components. $220 million is invested in tangible capital assets that I just explained. This is calculated as the $235 million on the previous slide, less long-term debt of $15 million. $15.8 million of the accumulated surplus has been invested into the government business enterprise Geo Sands that was previously explained, and then the other main components, the $39 million of reserves and reserve funds set aside by council internally earmarked for specific purposes. Reserve balances remain very, very strong and have increased by $5 million year over year. Provincial standards would like to see reserves cover up about 20% of annual operating expenses, where the town could cover 110% of annual operating expenditures, so a year-end. This again is well above any other municipalities we audit and the provincial average. The reserves on the financial statement are grouped into subcategories as presented here, but they are also presented, are grouped within the town's records, further broken down into projects within each of these subcategories. The balance presented here is water and wastewater, which increased $3.2 million in 2017. Water and wastewater have been mandated to be self-funding, so the rates paid today will allow for future infrastructure replacements. We would expect to see this reserve grow each year, except obviously in years where large capital replacements are targeted. The next largest is the acquisition of tangible capital assets reserve, some of which is earmarked for specific ongoing projects and other for future projects. Again, it is very positive to see this reserve growing particularly when used for the replacement of infrastructure. The working funds, operating, and tax rate stabilization reserves are smaller in comparison to the first two, but are a prudent part of the town setting aside funds to offset the impact of any unforeseen events that would cause large spikes in tax rates if there weren't such reserves available. Those are the highlights that as we see them from the 2017 fiscal year. Again, I would like to thank Jocelyn here, the great year working with the new treasurer and the rest of Treasury staff, and we're happy to feel if any questions that you may have for us.
Thank you very much, Jay. Jocelyn, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time. I think we've had a good review here. I thank Jay for his assistance in our recent busy events in the Treasury Department, so thank you very much for assisting us.
All right, and I just wanted to take a quick moment before we open the floor to thank Jocelyn and your staff for the great job that you've done, as Jay said, being a new treasurer in our community and taking over. I think we're in great shape. It's a very, very positive report. Be interesting to see how that gets spun, but I hear no negatives, only positives, and so I'll open the floor. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a couple of questions, because there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I want to make sure the record is correct, is that we are, how do, we are in a very good financial situation from what you've said, that if we had to dissolve a corporation, we would have enough to cover all of our debts, if that's correct?
Through Your Worship, yes. That's the kind of the doom and gloom look of it, that if you had to wind up that your liabilities aren't greater than your assets, and by no means are they. The municipal presentation of the balance sheet or statement of financial position doesn't break down assets into current and non-current, so it kind of really just look at it as a whole. So when you look at it from, there's enough assets there to cover the long-term liabilities, which we don't expect to become due in the next year.
And you've answered it through your presentation, but I just wanted you to reiterate it, is how do we compare financially to other communities?
Through Your Worship, the, so one thing I should put a caveat on, but when I'm looking at those financial indicators, since this is one of the first municipal presentations I've given, the data isn't there, so that that data is 2016 for provincial averages and for our surrounding municipalities, that is all 2016 data. But again, from our reserve standpoint, from financial assets, the town of Wasaga Beach is, it stands out, and I think there's a lot of good things to be said about that because it's in great financial health.
And what, just to further on that, if I, just one more question, is if you had to rate the town's financial position on a scale, say five to one, you know, one to five, how, where would you say we sit on that scale?
Sorry, five to be?
One to five, five to be excellent and one to be low.
It'd be tough to actually just put that margin, and it depends what you're looking at too, but there are very few negatives that I do find through the financial indicator. Obviously, we highlight the positive ones. If you run through the list of 50-plus indicators, it would say it is in the low-risk range in the majority of them. I think that's an indication of the zone that it's at the high end of the fiscal standard.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Bollonge?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, a question on, when you talk about capital assets and you mention lands that we own, would those lands have any factor of improved value, or is that taken from the last appraised value or purchase price?
So through Your Worship, all tangible capital assets are valued at their cost. Some of those, such as a contributed subdivision, would be at its fair value as of the date it was contributed, but as it stated that value until it is sold. So if we had purchased a land 50 years ago for a dollar, it would still be valued at a dollar on the balance sheet, so it does not mark up or down the fair.
So in reality, our capital investments would probably be even higher than what they're stated, given what's happened to real estate in this community over the last several years.
It doesn't reflect fair value for land changes, and that would be the same as any depreciable property, but because other properties that do run out of value, that's why we do depreciate them, whereas land and buildings stay the same as well, I should say, buildings actually depreciate as well, meanwhile, they may have gone up in value, so there is some speculation.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Ego?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a quick question on your opening letter here, under illegal acts, fraud, international misdemeanors. I'm having trouble understanding maybe the paragraph there, and I was wondering if maybe you could explain it to me, but it says that, "In auditing procedures including tests of your accounting records, we indicate that considered necessary for circumstances will necessary disclose all illegal acts, should any exist. Under CAS, we consider the municipality's control environment, governance, structure, circumstances encountered during the audit, and potential likelihood of fraud and illegal acts occurring. These procedures are not designed to test for fraudulent or illegal acts. When you're doing this, do you look for irregularities in the audit?"
Yes, through Your Worship, that's essentially what this is saying, is we ask the questions, we go, reach out to lawyers, we review invoices for any illegal acts that the town, if there's a lawsuit ongoing, that we would note. Some of our tests are designed around risky areas where cash is collected, where fraud may be perpetrated. We design our tests around those areas, but they're not specifically designed to look for fraud. I'm not going in to say, I think that there is fraud in this specific area and I'm going to catch it. If we happen to find it in our processes, then we would report it. And we haven't found any fraud as a part of our tests that we think are important to save part of the municipality's assets.
But you're not looking for it?
We're not specifically going in and designing tests to look for specific instances now.
Okay, thank you.
And that's standard procedure for this type of audit, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I have just a couple. I think it's, I'm very happy with the report. I think we're in great shape. I think it's important to give credit where credit is due. The town of Wasaga Beach is in great financial condition today, but this is not just because of the work that was done with past councils as well, and so it's good to know that we're carrying on that good stewardship and that, you know, I think we, our future, our story ahead is quite bright. So Jay, thank you for the report. I do have a motion moved by Counsel Bollonge and seconded by Counsel Stockwell, that Committee of the Whole receive the 2017 consolidated financial report for information, and further that Committee of the Whole recommend to council to approve the draft audited financial statements attached as presented by the town's auditors, Collins Barrow. Questions, comments? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Through Your Worship, with the motion having been read, we'll call for the vote. Counsel Bollonge?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Baifolchi?
In favor.
Counsel Bray?
In favor.
Counsel Ego?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
Favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
Moving on the agenda under item number four, unfinished business. We have two items there, the creation of a business plan for the beachfront properties and Counsel Stockwell's notice of motion to re-review council conference, convention, and seminar attendance policy. Any questions or comments on those two items? Seeing none, moving along. Item number five, new business. We have the beachfront management board, recommendation that Committee of the Whole receive from March 15, 2018 to March 28, 2018. In April 19, 2018, beachfront management board meeting minutes from the chief administrative officer has circulated, and that is moved by Counsel Stockwell and seconded by Counsel Bollonge. Questions or comments? Counselor Stockwell?
Yeah, I'll take it back to 4B if I may.
Okay. Counsel, we're gonna, Counsel, I'm just gonna deal with this motion since it's on the floor, and I'll come back, all right? Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Deputy Clerk?
We'll call for the vote. Counsel Bollonge?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Baifolchi?
In favor.
Counsel Bray?
In favor.
Counsel Ego?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
Favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
All right, Counsel Stockwell, floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it, Mr. Mayor. So now, this has been approved, and now it goes where?
So it's under unfinished business. It's to come back to this committee, what do you anticipate, Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to the council, I anticipate that the information will come back to the next Committee of the Whole meeting. The information is being gathered as we speak, and there should be a report for the next committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Director of Finance and Treasury report. All right, moving on to item number five, C. We have Director of Recreation Events Facilities report dated May 22nd. Chris, do you wish to speak for this?
Sir, thank you.
Martin?
Your Worship. Hello, everybody. I guess the primary rationale behind this report is to update council as to our progress on the Community Hub project. Dating back to March, we were presented to by FORC and CPRE regarding the outcome of the public needs assessment. Much work and discussion has gone on at a staff level on this project since, and most of that work is outlined in my report today. I think that the underlying importance of our discussion and the approval of these motions is to maintain momentum on a fairly complex project. So some of the primary points of issue that staff are working on today, the campus versus all-in-one, I trust that everyone remembers this idea of one large building versus a series of buildings to more or less fill out various program uses that were outlined in our public needs assessment. Financial modeling, this is a fairly complex exercise that we are not complete and won't be for some time, but understanding the timing and layering of the various areas of the project and how the town would go about paying. Top of mind on that one, a big question mark would be the government funding piece from senior levels of government. Obviously, it will take some time before we have commitment from the province and the federal government. Beyond that, we've been talking about land requirements. Parking has been one of the areas to ensure that we set ourselves up for success on this major project for the town. And lastly, engaging our steering committee. We have now established and had a first meeting, and there are a number of variables which are outlined towards the end of my report that discuss the various issues that will come up within our steering committee and using them as a sounding board in order to ensure that we get this major project right. So beyond that, unless there are specific questions, I'll give it back to you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Chris. Questions or comments for Chris? Counselor Smith?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I have just one, is have you developed timelines yet or are you that far into the process?
Definitely, that was the first question with our steering committee, and I have alluded here that our best case is fall of 2020. I do think that that is an aggressive best-case scenario, but if everything falls into line perfectly, we could be breaking ground in less than a year, and an 18-month build would bring us out to this 2020 ideal timeline, although there are a lot of variables yet to be addressed.
All right, other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Baifolchi?
Thank you. I fully see the need for the arena and moving forward quickly with that. I think we should have started on that three years ago. At one point, I had asked for some other possible locations, because I think we've put it in this hub now, and it's kind of committed to be there, and we don't own property, we don't, we don't own that, and that takes time. I think your timelines of best case are concerning to me. It's pretty aggressive, so I'm concerned that we will have an arena that is falling over and we will still be trying to deal with land purchases and designs and things like that. I also have concerns that there's several issues that haven't been considered. I also have concerns that there's several issues that haven't been considered as of yet that I think need to be considered prior to rushing forward with all of this. I think to commit to this much in an election year this close to lame duck is irresponsible, in my opinion. And can you just clarify for me, this motion itself, how much money financially are we committing the next council to by approving this?
Well, at this point, we are still under the analysis. I think you inferred that we are dedicated to this location, and we are trying to understand how the building would fit there. So in this report specifically, there are discussions around hiring an architect to ensure that our site fits the program components that we wish to put on the corner back in Maine. The cost to hire that consultant would be ultimately the only cost related to this report.
And how much was that?
We don't have that proposal yet, but I would estimate it would be less than $25,000 to have a fairly concise picture that we could say, this definitely fits. We could put this much parking, two arenas, et cetera.
So that's not actual design, because you're not getting that for $25,000. That's just to take building sizes and try and place them. That's not going to design buildings and everything else.
So we have a square footage now, that we've sort of figured out that we have a large arena, small arena, that we need circulation space, et cetera, and then some of these ideas around community services and retail and parking. And now we would like to see with this refined preliminary concept design and site plan that it certainly fits on the site.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is it would be no more than $25,000 to see how it will fit, and the reality is it would then be up to the next council to move forward at that point with what they see as the way they want it. We're in an election year. Lame duck is like around the corner, so that's what I'm asking.
Certainly. The timing, in addition to discussions on the property, are becoming tight. I think that reports back on both this preliminary design and the site location may well land us in the lame duck period. That would be, I think six weeks would be fairly aggressive for us to have the results of this, as well as the location cost.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith, and then Counsel Belanger, and then Counsel Bray.
Thank you, your worship. I was asked today a blatant question about who's going to pay for all of this, and are the taxpayers going to pay for all of this? And I said, well, we built the Y, and there are a lot of people that objected to my first proposal for the Y, and a couple of them are sitting in the audience here. But we raised money through the community. We, you know, people have to understand that it's not only the shoulders of taxpayers. There's the three grants we're hoping to get, and part of the community will be out of, one-third, I see, the way it happened with the Y, but the rest was all fundraised through different groups, like the Rotary Club, and the Primetime Club contributed a lot, the theater, I mean, just about every service club in town contributed money towards the Y project. So I anticipate the same type of fundraising going on for the arena as well.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Chris, as I recall, in a number of the presentations, we had looked at the square footage and population of many other communities as we've gone through this process so far. When we look at our anticipated population, you know, by 2031, and obviously, it's going to take some time to complete all this, but in my recollection, the size of our community hub was not something out of the ordinary or extraordinary related to what other communities have accomplished and funded through grants and fundraising. Is that, would that be an accurate statement?
Certainly. I think one community that we could consider as a nearby benchmark, a fairly large build was in Bradford. They built a library, cultural center, and a Twin Pad arena with a pool. We've already built a pool here in town recently, but they were roughly 165,000 square feet, so that's a little bit bigger than our first plan here, which is anticipating 150,000 square feet. So knowing that Bradford is a little bit larger than us today with our growth, I think we're on target.
And just another one question. I know you have had many, many meetings with stakeholders, and through those meetings with stakeholders, what has been the general acceptance or feeling towards what we're trying to accomplish here?
I think that users are generally keen to see the development of these new facilities. I can only generalize, and that's not scientific, but I do think that people are excited to see an expansion of the facilities that we currently have.
Thank you. Counsel Bray?
Thank you. So when I read through it, I had two major concerns. I would love to see an arena, and we need arenas. Just don't think that I in any way don't support the arena, but there's a retail component built into this arena that I seriously question. We're a municipality, I don't think it's our responsibility to build retail. We have developers in town that have empty units between here and Collingwood, so for us to build additional retail capacity and then potentially become the landlord of those facilities, I think is, it's not our business, and I don't know, like, I'm worried about that being involved in our hub. I don't think it needs to be there, I don't think it should be there. We've been practicing it being landlords down at the beachfront. If the auditors were here to report us on our landlord skills, I don't think they would be quite as high as they have been as, you know, as accountants. So the retail component really scares me, and I don't believe it should be there. The other thing is that this is the first report coming forward that's suddenly separating the library from the hub. So brief discussion, very brief today because it was only a public report today, but up until this point, the library has always been an integral part of the hub, and this report is now separating the library from the arena and saying that we're going to go ahead and we're going to start designing the arena, but the library's just back in the discussion stage. So I'm not sure where they got, you know, did they get downgraded, did they get shuffled off to one side? We're talking about potentially $45 million for an arena and a recreation complex. I've done a lot of research toward 10 libraries. I know what I can get for $7 million, I know what I can get for statistical studies that are scientifically accurate. We've asked people what they want, and absolutely, we all want it all, whether we're hockey players, whether we're, you know, library users, whether we're cultural center potential users. I absolutely know we want something, we want a showplace, but I think we want to, you know, we have, somebody said, we have one chance to do this right, and I'm not sure that in rushing it through, we're going to get it right. And it really concerns me that the culture in the library has kind of dropped off in this report. So I know I've said a lot, but retail is number one concern, and number two is certainly where we're struggling.
Deputy Mayor Byfoulche?
Oh, thank you. I had heard that the intention was to move the YMCA into this hub. Is there any truth to that? That discussions had been going on?
Okay, so specifically, I think, and Counsel Bray had brought this up as well, there is a component that is in our makeup of program parts today that includes community services and retail space. So the study that we went through with FORC and CBRE identified the idea that we would activate the Main Street with retail fronting on Main Street beside such a large facility like an arena, and that we would also incorporate community services in our hub in order to create a one-stop shop for our community members, that there would be an opportunity to participate in the recreational facilities and the library, but also to access services. So specific to Deputy Mayor Byfoulche's question, I think that the YMCA is a well-known partner of the town, and some of the identified community services that were listed in our study that are typical of Ontario community hubs would be a childcare or perhaps a fitness facility, and those could be reasonable partnerships that the town could look to in order to fill out some of this 15,000-square-foot community services that our people will certainly look for like they have in other Ontario community hub facilities.
Okay, so you're not looking at moving this YMCA in there and having an empty building down there by a week's?
Oh, no, no. Like, the childcare component, I think, is listed in, there's a program listing of all community services in our needs assessment that we received back in February, and childcare is one of those items. I think it was two, maybe 3,000 square feet, fitness facility, a similar number. So these are a bucket of different community services that would be ideal to amalgamate into our facility, so that a parent could run on a treadmill while their child was at hockey, skating, or a library program, for example.
Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Chair. Chris, could you clarify a little, because I'm a little confused? I'm reading this amount, includes the library, that yes, we've talked about a campus style, which means the buildings would be adjacent, but my understanding was that would leave us a little flexibility that we could phase in certain aspects depending on what the requirement was as we move forward, but that certainly, the library hasn't been in any stretch of the imagination put on a background.
No, so there's a chart, I think, that everyone's referencing with some square footages and dollar costs. So staff took the numbers that were given to us by FORC, CBRE, and our public needs assessment study, and we've tried to refine them, and this 42,380 includes all of those aspects that came out of the public needs assessment. All of these numbers are somewhat smaller than what the original suggestions were, although not grossly smaller, but certainly, the library component is in, in this idea. So when we talk about campus, there is certainly an opportunity to phase these buildings, and I guess in response to the specific piece of Counsel Bray's commentary about the library and where it sits in the project, it is certainly being analyzed, and I think my final bullet under the recommendations is that staff continue. And this is one of the pieces of our campus, pieces of building, I'm sorry, that's not a great word, but we separated the components, and there is an ongoing discussion with the library that may well be a public-private partnership, and it is well underway, although we don't at this point require preliminary concept drawings. Likely that would come from our development partner. So we're likely at the exact same stage in both the arena and the library components of this project, and we are anticipating that these are good numbers to start from.
And the questions or comments? Counsel Smith?
Just one in response to Counsel Bray's remark about retail. I would suggest that we all, as we did with the Y, go and check out some of these facilities, because the ones I've been in with Twin Pad have retail in them. And I'm not saying retail like clothing shops, but it would be whatever's needed for there, plus a snack shop and a place to have a coffee and everything, so, you know, that's a retail part. But I, when you talk to retail, that's what I see. Now, maybe you're seeing something else like a shopping mall, but I'm just seeing it as what public views.
So you're thinking of playing against sports or something that lends itself to...
Oh, yeah, or you can pitch your skate sharpened or something like that, so.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Bray?
Yeah, just further to that, I'm not sure that a skate sharpening shop or a, I can't remember what the other example was, is what we want on our Main Street. My understanding was that we didn't want an arena on the Main Street, we wanted pretty retail that would be walk-friendly, user-friendly, that all these hockey moms would spend money at. So my point is that if we want retail on the front street, I don't think the town should be building, it should be the landlord within the arena, if you want to have a snack bar and a skate sharpening line. I mean, I think that supports the facility, and it brings users to the facility, but true retail, I just worry that if we start to build retail, we're going to get into some of the issues that we're facing down at the beachfront, like leases and competition with the developing community that already has retail capacity within our town, within strip malls that are currently sitting vacant.
Other questions or comments? All right, I'll make a couple of comments. You know, Wasaga Beach has gone a long time with an old arena. We've gone a long time with a library that is way too small, I think from the day the doors opened. We've gone a long time without any government-type services, and so I think that the people of Wasaga Beach who pay their taxes faithfully every year should absolutely want all they can get. And I think we have a responsibility as a council to give them all we can while being fiscally responsible, and making sure that it's affordable, sustainable, and of course, not pie in the sky. So I support the report. I think it's a good report at this far. With respect to the lame duck, there's no doubt we're going to get to lame duck on July When we get there, we'll stop, but I don't think we stop now. I think we keep going. We've got a lot of things to get done for the people of this community. And so, Chris, thank you for your report, and keep going. It is moved by Counsel Belanger and seconded by Counsel Ego. That Committee of the Whole recommended council that it receive the update report regarding the Wasaga Beach Community Hub and staff recommendations pertaining to the recommendations of the economic analysis report presented to the town by FORC and by CBRE consultants. And further, that council approves staff recommendations to proceed with planning towards constructing facilities in a campus format as outlined in the needs assessment study. And further, that council directs staff to formalize procurement process, to retain project management services, to represent the town, tendering bidding, sorry, tendering building design to a prime consultant, as well as supporting staff and the Community Hub Steering Committee. And counsel directs staff to engage a design professional to refine the preliminary concept design and site plan for the recreation, Twin Pad, community service, and retail components in order to define land requirements for these facilities. And further, that staff be directed to continue discussions regarding options for the establishment of the library and cultural components of the project. Madam Deputy Clerk? No, we're moving on. We've been on this long enough.
I can't get clarification.
Oh, go ahead, yep.
Okay, I just, when I, when that was read out, that council directs staff to engage a design professional to refine the preliminary concept design. So concept design to me is the building. So I just want to make sure you told me $25,000, we're just placing some sized buildings, or...
That's correct. A preliminary sketch, so we understand that this building that we are envisioning will fit on said parcel of land, so we are certain that when we come back with a land recommendation that we know that we could put it with it.
Okay, concept design to me is what the building kind of looks like and stuff, so I just wanted to confirm that, that it's just placing the buildings on.
Yes, I think the word preliminary is primary to term concept.
And Chris, this is included in the 2.5 million that was approved for you to move forward anyway, is it not?
Yes, that is a budgeted amount this year.
Just a question, CAO?
Thank you. Just to further clarify, so the preliminary concept design was the design that FORC and CBRE did. They just show blocks on parcels, and what this will do is take those blocks and say, refine them to make sure that they fit on the site.
Madam Deputy Clerk?
Through your worship, with the motion having been read, we'll call for the vote. Counsel Belanger?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Byfoulche?
Opposed.
Counsel Bray?
Opposed.
Counsel Ego?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
Favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is five in favor and two opposed. The motion is carried.
All right, moving on to item number five, E, the CAO's report dated May 22. Delegate Authority Proclaimations. Mr. CAO, who is to speak to this?
Just briefly, this was work that the clerk had done before. She left, and so the report is under my signature. Basically, it's just an update of the lame duck provisions under council's policy, changes some lettering and whatnot, but I think essentially, it's the same as what existed previously.
All right, so no changes that you're aware of in this report?
No standard changes.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, it's moved by Counsel Ego and seconded by Counsel Stockwell. The Committee of the Whole recommends to council that policy 1-3, delegation of powers and duties, policy amended by removing the section related to lame duck and inserting the following: "Under delegated authority during a lame duck period under section 275 of the Municipal Act, the CAO has delegated the authority to: appoint or remove from office any officer of the municipality; hire or dismiss any employee of the municipality; dispose of any real or personal property of the municipality which has a value exceeding $50,000 at the time of disposal; and D, make many, any expenditures," not many, George, "make any expenditures or incur any other liability which exceeds $50,000." Under delegate, it's all done by the CAO. Under source of power of duty, it is under bylaw or... the CAO. Under source of power of duty, it is under bylaw or by bylaw and limited restrictions. In the event of dismissal or termination, such action may only be taken in consulting, consultation with the town solicitor and under the disposal of real or personal property in accordance with the procedure set out in the town's land sale and acquisition bylaw, save and accept the passage of a bylaw of council. Any such sale or purchase shall only proceed in consultation with the town solicitor and the town director of finance and the treasurer. Under item D, which was make expenditures or incur any other liabilities which exceed fifty thousand dollars, this is only, any such action may only be taken in consultation with the town's auditors and/or the town's director of finance and treasurer, and, uh, item C and D above do not apply if the disposition or liability was included in the most recent budget adopted by council before nomination day in the election. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Your worship, we'll call for the vote. Counsel Belange?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi, in favor. Counsel Bray?
In favor.
Counsel Eagle?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
Favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Moving on to item five F, CAO's report dated May twenty-second, the delegated authority proclamations. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, your worship. This is an information report for, uh, for members of council with respect to a change in process in terms of how, uh, proclamations are issued and, and specifically just advising, uh, members of council that under the, under the delegation bylaw, that your office has the ability to be able to issue proclamations as opposed to all of them having to come to council, but there was a question about that process, so this outlines the, uh, the rationale and when, uh, when that change occurred and, and how it's being implemented.
All right, questions or comments? Counsel Bray?
Uh, just a comment. I think it's one of the nice things we do at council meetings, because it celebrates, whether it's Crime Stoppers Month or, um, accessibility awareness. So I'm wondering if you could still announce that, you know, June is so-and-so is, even if we don't go through the official motion, but that there would somewhere be a, an announcement part of the council meeting that you could share this information with other people, because I think it's, um, good information to share.
All right, any other questions or comments? Duly noted, thank you, Counsel Bray. Moved by Counsel Belange, seconded by Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi, that committee of the whole received the information report pertaining to the application of policy one dash three, delegation of power and duties policy for information. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Thank you, worship. We'll call for the vote. Counsel Belange?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi, in favor. Counsel Bray?
In favor.
Counsel Eagle?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
Favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Moving on to item F, uh, CAO's report dated May twenty-second with respect to the heritage designation request, Marlwood Golf and Country Club. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, worship. This was, uh, another initiative, um, that was begun, uh, by Andrea before she departed, um, and the report is before council today. There is a recommendation there, and attached to the recommendation is a report from, um, a land use planner, John Casey Polis, that, um, has experience with respect to dealing with, um, properties of historical, um, interest. Uh, he has, uh, done an analysis of, um, the request to designate. Um, he has provided his opinion as a, as a land use planner that has experience in, um, heritage projects. He is not a certified heritage associate professional. Um, those individuals, all they do is, is review specific requests for heritage designation. He has done a, uh, preliminary review based on the information outlined in his report, and he is of the view that, um, that the Marlwood, um, golf course, uh, Golf and Country Club does not meet the requirements to be designated as this, uh, as a heritage, uh, property under the Heritage Act, and as a result is saying that the request be denied. Uh, it's ultimately council's decision in terms of how it wants to proceed. Uh, he has just given his opinion based on his expertise and, and his background, uh, but, uh, in the report it outlines his, uh, his view on, on, on the, uh, golf course, and he talks about, uh, the course as a whole versus certain sections of the course, um, and making that distinction. I don't go, I won't go into the details of his analysis. It's there for, for members of council. Um, it's up to council to decide whether it's prepared to accept his advice, uh, on this matter, or, uh, proceed to, uh, the next step, which would be, if it wished, to engage a certified heritage associate professional at a, at a cost to do a comprehensive analysis. In his view, at this particular point in time, it, um, it does not meet, uh, does not meet compliance.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi?
Thank you. Um, this has been an issue for years. I think when I first got on council, there was talk of developing the, the golf course, and people were concerned, and, um, quite frankly, I, I get it. He, he's been in the business and things like that. He's not a certified heritage professional, and I think in order to put this issue to bed, I think we need to do it proper and get a proper, um, proper opinion on it from a heritage specialist, just so that it can be done wherever it needs.
Other questions? Counsel Bray?
Not yet. Just in his conclusion, I think the, when he starts to talk about not affordable, the probability of it, uh, low given the cultural heritage, he goes on with some very valid points that you kind of think. Then he throws in a little bit about these reservations along with the potential, the designation request may only be sought in order to limit the proposed residential development. I think at that point he lost, he lost my credibility, because he's taking, he's making it personal, and it really shouldn't be. If it's historical, it should be designated. So, yeah, I think we should look into what the costs for the review are, and then make a decision at that point if we know it's two thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. So I would support a request for, um, you know, maybe we send it back to our CAO, so that we know, is it a two thousand dollar request or ten thousand dollar request, to determine if it truly is historical.
Well, seeing a, uh, motion for a referral or a deferral?
Referral, back to staff.
Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, for that, it would be a motion to refer, and, uh, the gentleman in conversation did indicate that if that were the decision of, of council, he could certainly, uh, indicate, uh, four or five, um, consultants that specialize in this field, if council wished to pursue that. Um, if, if council does deem it appropriate to refer, I think it would be important to have specific direction back to me in terms of what you're asking for, so I know exactly what I'm being asked to pursue.
That goes back to you, Counsel Bray, for a referral, specific?
For the referral, I would like to know if we were to, I wrote down the words, um, to refer it back to a heritage designation specialist, um, what cost would we be looking at? Is it a, you know, one thousand, is it a ten thousand, and then I think we can make it an easier decision.
All right, uh, so you, you want to make that referral?
Yes, please.
Okay, someone to second that referral, Counsel, Counsel Bray, or, Count, Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi, sorry. So we'll need to deal with that referral first.
For Laura's benefit, the, uh, the term is a CHAP, CHAP professional.
George, while the Deputy Clerk's preparing, do you have any idea on, on cost of this? Your worship, I am knowing, so this will be something.
Well, while we're waiting, if it's, if it's going to be anything other than the referral, then we'll wait till after we have the referral, but...
So we're going to read this from the screen, and then the clerk, or the deputy clerk will record it. So it is moved by Counsel Bray, seconded by Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi, resolved that committee of the whole refer item five F back to the CAO for further review and investigation into the cost and the requirements to engage a designated CHAP professional. Questions or comments on that? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Thank you, worship. We'll call for the vote. Counsel Belange?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi, in favor. Counsel Bray?
In favor.
Counsel Eagle?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
In favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
All right, shall we move on? Counsel Stockwell, or Belange?
Yeah, just, just a question to the CAO was, uh, I'm assuming we've incurred a cost for this original, uh, I, I just wondered what that cost was, if it might give us some indication as to where we're going.
On the current report?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I do not have that information. I could certainly provide it to members of council, but, thank you.
All right, moving on in the agenda?
Do I order, your worship?
Go ahead, Counsel.
Um, the original motion, are we not voting on that at all?
No, it's been referred. We only voted that, uh, that it, uh, referred.
Been an amendment.
No, we only, we only voted on the original if, uh, the referral had, had been defeated. All right, moving on to item five G, the CAO's report dated May twenty-second, restaff assistance for CAO's clerk and treasury departments. Mr. CAO?
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, back in March, I, uh, brought a report forward requesting, uh, administrative assistance with, within the administration department. Um, subsequent to writing the report and bringing it forward to a committee, I became aware of some other needs within the administration, treasury, and clerk's office, and I asked if it would be referred back, and it was. I then had a meeting with, uh, clerk's office, treasury staff, uh, the administration staff, just to go over what the needs are within the various, uh, departments, and, uh, I brought forward the report back, uh, brought the report back to, uh, committee outlining that, um, additional administrative support, uh, is required, um, in the, uh, in the areas of, uh, the administration department, clerk's office, and treasury, and, uh, I outlined the reasons in the report in terms of where an administrative support for a period of about sixteen weeks, uh, four months, uh, would assist our office in terms of managing the various, uh, functions that, uh, that we're, uh, dealing with, primarily those around the beachfront, uh, and, um, dealing with tenants and dealing with, uh, a lot of administrative tasks associated with that. Now, our, our professional staff, our line staff are dealing with that, and we feel with administrative support person that that would assist our line staff to be able to deal with, uh, other issues that they should be, should be dealing with. So I brought the report back to committee for consideration, and, uh, if we have to answer any questions, that's, uh, committee, we may have.
All right, questions or comments? Counsel Smith?
Just one, uh, to George, if I may, for you here. Uh, is this not already a job description of a staff person that's currently on staff?
Um, thank you, your, uh, your worship. No, this is, this is something where the, the, the greatest tasks that, uh, have been identified are things that may fit under a number of different job descriptions, but due to those, just the volume of work, it's, uh, these areas are, uh, have been identified as areas that we, we could use some assistance.
And who would they report to, and where would they be classified in, on the salary grid?
So if, if, if I may, uh...
Please go ahead.
... worship, uh, to Counsel Smith. So we have a process to, uh, if the committee were to approve this, we develop a job description and a reporting, uh, relationship. Uh, that job description would be evaluated using our job evaluation, uh, process, and then, uh, a wage would be, uh, assigned to it. I, in my report, I've outlined, um, I've outlined, uh, a probable salary range, just knowing what I know today, but I would have to go through, uh, just a formal process. I've got the, I've got the nuts and bolts to develop the job description. It's just a matter of creating the job description and then going through the evaluation process.
So, just further to that, if I may, your worship's talk?
Sorry, one minute, Counsel, you finished, or?
I just, just on the reporting relationship, I think certainly part of the conversation if the committee were to, to approve this, we've left the reporting relationship. It may, may report to me, it may report to the clerk. Um, I'm not, I'm not that, uh, fussy with respect to that. I think what we'll do is look at that in terms of what makes the most sense.
I, I'm, I'm just concerned about the, uh, position as it stands. Um, uh, I won't go there unless we're going in camera, so...
Other questions or comments? George, uh, I mean, we, we, our clerk has been gone two weeks now. We anticipate how long before we hire a new clerk, they would start?
I would, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I would say we're probably a month away, minimum a month away.
So we're probably looking six to eight weeks. Uh, we've saved now without having a clerk in place?
As we go forward, yes.
Till we have a new clerk on hand, and so, uh, that's going to be substantial, that's substantial dollars that could be put towards this assistant, uh, position as well, correct?
Correct.
Then I have no issue. All right, uh, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, moved by Counsel Eagle, seconded by Counsel Belange. The committee of the whole authorized a chief administrative officer to hire administrative assistant to assist the CAO's clerks and treasuries departments. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Your worship, the motion having been read, we'll call for the vote. Counsel Belange?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi?
In favor.
Counsel Bray?
In favor.
Counsel Eagle?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
In favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Moving on to five H, the CAO's report, he's a busy guy, George. CAO's report dated May twenty-second, re-electronic meeting participation and follow-up report. George?
Thank you. This is, uh, a report again that was initiated by, uh, Andrea before she departed, and I, there was, um, it was a request for some additional information with respect to electronic participation at council meetings, and she has done a, a review and, and prepared a report for council's consideration, and basically is, uh, recommending that we maintain, uh, maintain a status quo, and that, um, that the procedural bylaw be reflected, uh, be amended to reflect that no member of council may participate electronically.
Questions or comments? Counsel Bray?
Just disappointed in twenty eighteen that we can't be, um, kind of moving forward in the times. I think I've participated in bordering meetings the last twenty years, um, either electronically or certainly through a voice telephone, and, uh, it's kind of a shame to shut it down, but hopefully the next council will look at it here from now, and maybe the technology will change and so on.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, moved by Counsel Eagle, seconded by Counsel Belange. The committee of the whole recommend to council that procedural bylaw be amended to reflect that no member may participate electronically, and further, that staff be directed to bring forward the bylaw to amend procedural bylaw to a future meeting of council for consideration. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Thank you, worship. The motion having been read, we'll call for the vote. Counsel Belange?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi, in favor. Counsel Bray?
In favor.
Counsel Eagle?
In favor.
Counsel Smith?
In favor.
Counsel Stockwell?
Favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, item five I, the CAO's report dated May twenty-second with respect to the relationship with the Simcoe County District School Board. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, worship. Uh, in, um, in your agenda package is a report that I prepared subsequent to a meeting that I had with, um, Director of Education for the Simcoe County District School Board. Uh, you may recall, I brought a report forward on March twentieth that dealt with, uh, breakdown of communication between our Director of Economic Development and the Director of Education, and I, I suggested that a meeting with the Director of Education would be appropriate to ensure that there's, uh, continued, uh, lines of communication between the Simcoe County District School Board and then, and the town remaining in place, and, uh, we had a good meeting, good discussion, and, um, the director, uh, is of the view that there is, uh, good lines of communication at the staff level, that, uh, staff, uh, in our planning department and staff in their planning department are working with respect to, uh, a new elementary school that's being proposed for Sunnydale Trails, uh, subdivision. He didn't indicate that, uh, with respect to, um, the issue of the, uh, secondary school for the town of Wasaga Beach, that, uh, he would prefer to deal with me in my capacity as the chief administrative officer, uh, Director of Education to, um, to CAO of the municipality. So, um, in, in that way, it would be senior official to senior official. Um, he did talk, we did talk about the, the secondary school, and he talked about, um, the, uh, the capital challenges facing the board, et cetera, et cetera, but he did say that, you know, the, it's certainly, the secondary school for Wasaga Beach is certainly on their radar. Uh, they're certainly aware of it, and, um, it's just a matter of, uh, the timing of when that, when that will happen. Uh, we concluded basically saying that the, the board has started a conversation about the acquisition of, uh, the property for the secondary school, and that, that, uh, process, um, will take some time and will be done, uh, as normal property acquisitions, uh, take place. Probably most of it will be in, in confidence as typical property acquisitions. There's lots of negotiations that go back and forth, and, um, that was essentially the conversation. Thank you.
George, questions or comments? Counsel Smith?
Thank you, worship. Um, I'm probably going to talk about this again tomorrow, but I, I see from the county, uh, objecting to, uh, or not objecting, cautioning us against building any more housing, especially down in, on Mosley...
on Mosley Street, because they'll have to accommodate the children to go to school. And I'm concerned that perhaps the high school task force could follow this up, but, I mean, we've got a subdivision with 3,200 people. Are they going to object because they can't look after these kids that move into these subdivisions when they're objecting to a small plan, you know, for, on Old Mosley, not Old Mosley, Mosley and Old Mosley? And, you know what, to me, I don't know what's going on with the school board, but I, I don't think they should be, that's a job to provide education, not for us to post. And said, I'll bring it up tomorrow, but, you know, to post the fact that they want us to tell people that are buying the houses that the kids aren't guaranteed they'll be able to get to school, and that disturbs me.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Bray?
I just a comment, a question to the C O. The goal of the high school task force, which I sit on, is to try to advocate for a school and high school in Wasaga Beach, but as you are now the contact with the Simcoe District School Board for anything to do with the high school, you'll be joining us at the high school task force meetings. So that you're aware of the strategy of the high school task force, if you're the contact person for it.
The answer is yes, George, but.
So certainly, you know, there's lots of work being done at the task force level, and I'm asked to attend the task force meeting from time to time, when required. I'm happy to attend on an ongoing basis, but we have staff that are supporting the task force, and they, and they do that job, and certainly if there were matters that the task force felt that I needed to be there in order that I could be the liaison, if that's, if that's the correct term, then I'm happy to do that. So it's, I guess it's just a function of time, you know, there's only so much time and priorities, and, and so I'd be happy to, to attend, but it's whether I perform the, what function, I think that would be important to clarify.
That's right, so whether your attendance is necessary, but just that it's clear that any course that one has practiced will work to come through. Like, can the high school task force continue to communicate directly with the Simcoe District School Board despite them asking you to be the key person to do with the high school?
Mr. Chair, I think the task force, in terms of reference, do indicate that the task force does have the ability to be able to communicate. So from the task force standpoint, I think if it has to do from a staff perspective, dealing with the, with the high school, I think it's probably best that the staff correspondence dealing with the high school come to the bylaw.
So for clarity, as I, as I understand this, George, is that the Director of Education, and I'm going to, I'm going to be, try to be as cautious as I can here, the Director of Education and our staff liaison, Andrew McNeil, clearly will have to, are agreeing to disagree on an issue that they have. So because of that, you were asked to reach out to the Director of Education and have a conversation. And so as I see that, nothing changes. The only, the only thing that changes is instead of our staff liaison speaking with the Director of Education, if that needs to happen, you know, from a staff standpoint, that it will be you. With respect to the high school task force, the terms of reference are what they are, and the high school task force will continue to have the same path it's always gone down. If we feel we need to have a meeting with the board, we reach out to the board, we ask the board for a meeting, hopefully they would give us one, and we sit down and have a conversation. Does that sound very much?
Yes.
That is, that's it? Thank you, George. All right, now I guess the other thing to point out is that I hope you can get along, George, with the director, because we're not changing again. It is what it is. So do your best, please. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, matter, I'll read the, the motion moved by Counselor Bray, seconded by Counselor Ego. The committee of the whole received the chief administrative officer's report pertaining to the staff relationship with the Simcoe County District School Board. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Thank you, Worship. We'll call for the vote. Counselor Balanji?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Byfoltchi?
In favor.
Counselor Bray?
In favor.
Counselor Ego?
In favor.
Counselor Smith?
In favor.
Counselor Stockwell?
Favor.
Mayor Smith?
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion is carried.
Thank you. And moving on to item number six, items for future meetings. We have none at this point, and the next portion of this meeting will be in closed session. Before we do that, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come back and read that motion.